Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 5:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to thank you, everybody, for being here. We'll begin with invocation by Clint Walker. Clint, if you'd be so kind, from the First Baptist Church.
Please join me in prayer. Thank you, God, for this day. Thank you, God, for a warmer day. We come before you and we ask, first of all, we're thankful. We're thankful for the wisdom of these folks here that have invited your presence in to this place through this time of invocation. We pray for folks as they make decisions. Long meetings are never fun, but sometimes they're important. And so, we ask that you would give each of us that are here wisdom and patience and thought for not only ourselves, but others. Help us, Lord, to get through all the details and to do what's best for all, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here. 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 Here.
All right, a current copy of the Open Meetings Act in Nebraska is posted at the wall at the back of the council chambers. For those that have a copy of the agenda, I'd like to direct your attention to the meeting procedures. The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address, and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor. An individual in violation will be declared out of order. We'll begin with the...well, let me back up a little bit. I want to draw your attention to item number nine on the agenda. So, it was a public hearing for action on recommendation by the City of North Platte Planning Commission on an application by Darlene Albrecht and conditional use permit for a professional office building. I just would like to let those that were here for that particular item that that item number nine will be pulled from the agenda by request of Mr. Albrecht. So, if you...you're certainly welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you like, but if you were here for that, know that that item's been pulled off the agenda. Okay, we'll begin with a consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one is approved minutes of February 19th, 2019. Well, that's it.
We approve item one of the consent agenda.
Wow, I was ready for a whole boatload.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And that motion passes, and now we have everybody livened up. We can continue with the regular agenda. Item number two, authorize mayor to sign health and accident contracts for the city's self-insuring health and accident plan beginning April 1st, 2019. Spencer? Yeah, would you like to speak, please?
Yes, I can. And I think I'm supposed to...so, I'm Spencer Thomas. Address is 11755 East Peakview Avenue, Suite 250, Inglewood, Colorado, 80111. I don't have to say that very often, so...anyways, had a really productive day, actually. Both myself, Ryan, and Mike Pullman, who's our managing partner, has spent the day here running through a number of things. And so, just want to go through...you know, this year has been a pretty high claims utilizing year for the city. Traditionally, I'm actually looking at, over the past 10 years, the city has traditionally run at about 78% of our expected claims costs, which is, you know, actually slightly lower than expected. This year's been an anomaly of the year. The city has ran at 101%, so again, over by a considerable amount what the city has traditionally run at. With that being said, we've identified a number of different areas that we feel like there can be considerable improvement made as far as the plan design goes, as far as different cost mitigation strategies. The biggest one in particular being working with Great Plains, working with the hospital. And actually, part of our meetings today included meeting directly with the CFO and one of the employees that works with the hospital as well. We both...we all walked away from those meetings, felt like they were very productive, and are working towards goals and solutions that are going to be beneficial for, you know, for all the parties involved. And again, we recognize that this is an entity that's a prominent member of the community, and so, we want to make sure that we're going to, you know, do well by the city as well as by the hospital as well. So, we're excited for that and feel like we've got ongoing meetings scheduled with the hospital to make sure that we can come to a resolution, like I said, that's going to be effective there. Besides that, we've also, you know, per our meetings today, not only with Jim, but with the insurance committee, are going to be implementing a number of different programs into the program as well. Some further cost containment strategies on the prescription program, as well as in some other areas related to oncology. That's another area that's going to be, you know, vastly expensive. And so, we're going to be implementing a couple of programs this year that are going to really, you know, work to achieve that goal, as well as one that we...one additional change that we've agreed to with both Jim, as well as the insurance committee, is we're actually...it was agreed to increase the deductible on the health plan by $250, so going from $500 to $750. That's a modest increase. Looking at national average statistics, as well as comparing the city of North Platte to peer public administration, the deductible is low. It hasn't been changed in many, many years. And so, we felt that this modest increase would help also control the cost of the city that the city incurs and make sure that we can help continue to manage the program rolling forward. With that being said, we have agreed and support a resolution that came from both our meetings with Jim, as well as the insurance committee. We've enjoyed decreases the last two years, and this year, you know, we're going to support that the budget be increased 15% for insurance. And so, that's what we would be putting forward, is that we would be increasing costs by 15%. So, that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
To answer your question, would you mind breaking down the 15% on what part of that is management? What part of that's like reinsurance costs and what part of that is more filling of the pool type costs? And I apologize, I'm new to the council, so I don't understand the structure of the plan completely.
Yeah, so, the city of North Platte, as you may or may not be aware, is it's a self-funded health plan. And one of the beauties of being self-funded is that you really get to a spot where your fixed costs, your administration costs, are a very small fraction of your overall program. So, to give you round numbers, your total fixed costs that you would be paying for reinsurance, so protecting the group on a specific level, that's going to be about $900,000 of the overall total cost of the program. The other part of the program, which would be about somewhere in the ballpark of about $5 million, would be actually going towards paying claims. So, your fixed costs are a substantially small portion of the overall program.
So, in the 15% increase of the overall, what is that in the area of the reinsurance? How does that compare to the area of the claims pool as compared to the administrative expenses?
Yeah, so, from an overall total dollar perspective, the actual increase as far as fixed costs is working out to be a 9% increase. So, right now, you're sitting at about seven, a little over $700,000 in fixed costs. That would be going to about $800,000, and the rest of that would be going towards claims.
Is the increase on the reinsurance side a function of having high claims that hit the reinsurance levels, then?
Yeah, to be a little bit more specific, and I mean, I think these are good questions to be asked, so to give you an idea, we took a comparative look at the last four years on your large dollar claims. And keep in mind that the city has a protection over $80,000. So, for individuals who are incurring claims over $40,000, you typically run right at about the 20 member mark. So, you have 20 members who are incurring more than $40,000 in claims. The last two years, you've had over 35. And, you know, totaling, just to give you a rough estimate of the, you know, overall spend that the city's incurring on those 35, last year, $3 million of that was coming from those 35, and this year, we're sitting at about $2.5 million.
And you said that the three-year average is under 5%, then? As of just doing the rough math in my mind, if we were to take the three-year average of the overall increase in the plan?
Yeah, so, actually, the last...so, the last two years, we actually presented both about a 1% decrease. So, two years ago, it was a 1% decrease, give or take. Last year was another about 1% decrease. So, this year has just been a high claims year.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
So, you said that it was going from 500 to 750. What are those other comparable cities? Where are they at with their comparables and everything else?
Yeah, no, so, as far as...I mean, we took a couple of different things. We actually benchmarked your group against 45,000 different employer plans. As far as deductibles go, most of them are going to be in the range...most of your peers are in the 500 to 1,000 range. If I remember correctly, it was about 30%, and then the other 30% were in the 1,000 to 2,000 range. So, again, you know, the vast majority of your peers, as far as the deductible goes, are sitting right in that 500 to $2,000 range. The other area that was of most interest and most notable is that your out-of-pocket maximum, which again is really what your employees are capped at, was 3500. The vast majority of your peers are actually sitting at 5,000 and above.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign health and accident contracts for the city's self-insuring health and accident plan beginning April 1st, 2019.
Second.
That motion passes. Item number three, action on ordinance number 4005, authorizing issuance of general obligation various purpose bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $7,750,000.
Move that we suspend the rules requiring three separate readings on ordinance.
Oh, you can read first, huh?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation various purpose bonds of the city of North Platte, Nebraska, in the principal amount not to exceed $7,750,000 for the purpose of paying the cost of improving streets and intersections in street improvement districts number 298, 301 through 304, and 306 through 325, and paving districts number 830 and 831, paying the cost of sewer improvements for the city in sanitary sewer connection district number 18 and 19, and paying the cost of water improvement and water extension district number 261. Directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, describing the form of said bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same, providing for the sale of the bonds, and authorizing officers to the city to finalize terms of the bond. Authorizing delivery of the bonds to the purchaser and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
Move that we waive the rules requiring three separate readings on ordinance number 4005. The reason why you want to suspend it is that way we can try to get those locked in before they would change in a couple more, like four weeks, six weeks.
Yes, please.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Bruce Lefler, Meredith Investment Corp. Yeah, the waiving of the reading is so that we can lock in those rates and commit to them once we have the, basically, the orders for the issuance of the bonds and not have to wait for three subsequent readings. It's a standard procedure, certainly, that we've asked the councils to go through anytime we authorize bonds.
We asked...oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you said...
I'm curious, Jim, I don't know if you were able to get me the numbers. What does that make the city's total bonded indebtedness?
Yeah, I laid it there at your desk there just a few minutes ago. The current, on the general obligation side, the principal is about 19 million...or, excuse me, 13,990. The total with interest is about 16.8 million.
Jim, does that include this?
No, this does not.
When that's added on to there, we're looking at roughly $24,000, $25,000,000.
That's correct.
But now, that's money that's actual borrowed. That's not payout cost?
That's right.
What will the payout cost be? Do you know?
Bruce would have those numbers...it would be in addition then to the 16.8.
This is actually a motion to suspend and require three readings, isn't it?
Right.
Yes. Yeah, I was curious if we could get some of the questions answered before we voted on the suspension of the readings, if that's acceptable.
It's anticipated right now that your total...excuse me, that your total borrowing cost on the 7.7 million would be $10,600 addition, so that's your additional with interest.
Is there any idea, then, Jim, what the payout cost was on the 16, $17,000,000, $16,800,000?
That actually would be the payout. And if you look there in the second column from the left, it gives you the principal amount.
Sir, I see it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jim.
Oh, I was just going to say that you had a question, too, there about refinancing on some of those, and I know that Bruce monitors that for us, too, so if he would maybe address that for you?
Certainly. We continue to monitor...okay, first of all, when the city issues bonds for, whether it's the general obligation side or the revenue side, typically, those bonds are callable or are not callable for a period of five years. So, we have to wait until that five-year period of time has gone over before we can actually do a refinancing of those bonds. We continue to monitor those for the city on a regular basis to see if there's opportunities in the interest environment to refinance as they come available to do so. We are actually looking at a couple of issues coming up immediately, kind of following, going past this one for refinancing purposes, one on a geo side and one on the revenue side. But wanted to get past this particular issue because it's been...this particular issue, as you mentioned, is for those paving sewer and water projects that there are warrants outstanding. And so, we're basically taking the temporary financing of those warrants and putting in 20-year permanent financing at this juncture. It's anticipated the debts or the amortization on that debt will be level...it'll be level amortization for a 20-year period of time. As of right now, we're anticipating, again, the interest rate to be between probably 3.5 to 3...or 3.4 to 3.5% all in interest cost on that borrowing.
What do you project the long end of the bonds will go at?
The 20-year spot is probably in that 3.50 to 3.60 range. Now, one other thing that we're looking at, I guess, from a timing perspective, the ordinance that is before the council is what we typically call a parameters ordinance. It has authorized the bonds not to exceed $7,750. It has authorized the bonds not to exceed 20 years, December 15th of 2038, and an average interest rate of not to...or an average rate not to exceed 4.25%. And that, we anticipate, again, as I'm saying that, to be in that 3.5% range. We have taken these bonds to the rating agency...I always got to go straight to Standard and Poor's Rating Agency to get these bonds rated at the $7 million level. Last rating we did on the city's geo bonds was in 2013, which was a AA minus rating. And so, we anticipate that to be confirmed. And the reason that we go that route is investors looking to buy these bonds when they see that they're rated, especially in that AA category, are willing to take a lower interest rate. And so, a couple of things are happening in today's environment that with the 2018 Tax Act, we're seeing quite a bit of lower participation from banks. The tax exemption is becoming a little less important to some banks just from the tax implication standpoint, so we're seeing a little less there. So, opening this up to more folks, whether it's an insurance company or institutional investors at the rating, with the rating, we think will be positive for the city. The second piece of that is, we talked to the rating agency last week. They asked their various and sundry financial questions. We anticipate to get that confirmation on that rating Thursday this week. So, once we get that rating confirmation, our anticipation will be in the market the following week with the bonds, and then this ordinance will allow for the mayor and/or your city administrator to sign off on the final terms once we lock those in within the parameters that are in place.
Jim, we're borrowing money in our current budget. Are there enough funds there to provide for payment of this along with the other ones? Are we going to be looking at an increase in our budget?
No, no, this would be covered.
Bruce, what's the advantage of waiting on the ones that would be callable and out of the market at this point versus trying to wrap them into this transaction?
Well, two things. When you do the...we, as typically, we've talked to the city on the refinancing...oh, I'm sorry, more specific question to what you're getting to. The other issue that we're looking at, we are attempting to keep these bonds what's called bank qualified, which means the banks do have access to buy them. They have a...there's an economic advantage to them to participate in local bonds, as it were. In order to keep them there, you can't have a bond...the city can't issue more than $10 million of the bonds in a calendar year, and/or you can't have a bond issued more than $10 million, which makes sense. This particular issue standing by itself will be bank qualified at $7.6 million. The city does not have a lot of anticipation issuing more new debt in the balance of the year, so we keep that number under $10 million. The refunding bond issue that will refund 2013 bonds that were outstanding was bank qualified at the time, and if you refinance it at the same term and the same amount, you carry that bank qualification forward without having to add it to that $10 million. So, the separation is what keeps both of those issues bank qualified, which again, we believe gives us a broader audience for offering the bonds. And our anticipation is, once we get past this particular issue, we'll come back either at your next meeting in November...or, excuse me, your next meeting in March here, or your first meeting in April, to do the same thing for those refunding bonds.
Do the transaction costs stay similar by the two?
Yeah. The issue, so...and the other thing that we're saving on, quite frankly, is we took both issues together to the rating agencies, so that they're going to put their rating out on both issues, but we're going to issue them separately. If we'd have done on one issue and then came back at a separate rating on the second issue, we'd have more costs there. So, we tried to mitigate those costs.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend.
Your motion to suspend right now?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And that motion passes.
Now, I move that we would adopt ordinance number 4005, authorizing the issuance of general obligation various purpose bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed $7,750,000.
And that motion passes as well. All right, item number four, we have a public hearing and action on resolution to approve and adopt a blight and substandard study by the city of North Platte and approval of related actions regarding the blight and substandard study, Pacific Street Study, prepared by Marvin Planning Consultant LLC.
Good evening. Keith Marvin, Marvin Planning Consultants, David City, Nebraska. I'd like to give you just real quickly a little background on this. I'm sure you've heard it in the past, but I think it's important because I've...since I got here a little before 5:00, I've already heard some issues that are out there regarding what blighted really means and that...the term blight unfortunately goes back to the '60s and '70s when the legislature put it forward, a constitutional amendment to allow for the use of tax increment financing and create a community redevelopment authority in this process that we call blighted and substandard. I will tell you that most planners and a lot of people in this state regret the term blighted and substandard because it has negative connotations that go back to the '60s and the urban renewal movement, when they went through and they clear-cut a lot of older buildings for newer and better projects. I can tell you that's not what this is in Nebraska. Blight gets into the discussion of 15 different statutory topics, and that's what my job is to do, is report...put together a report that looks at those different topics. Not all of them are required in order to make a finding of blighted and substandard. So, some of the things that I think are important to look at as we go forward here is, right now, one of the things I like to look at is where are you at? Because statutorily, you're required to stay below 30, 35% or below of the total area of your community. Right now, the city has 9,033.00 acres. Of that, 1,969.54 acres have already been declared as blighted and substandard. That equals 28.8%. You're well under the threshold of 35%. The area that's under discussion in this study totals 42.33 acres. This would add another .47% to that 21.8%, still keeping you well under. What we did with this study is, I was put...I was hired and contracted by another...by an individual that...and company that was looking at doing some work in this area. If they're here and they want to discuss that, that's fine, but we're here to look at the area as a whole, as far as if it's blighted and substandard. If they come forward with any work in the future, that's when it's important to start talking about the next step. This area was defined because we needed to look at and have a sufficient number of structures that met the 40-year age threshold that the statutes require. With that, we found...and there's two ways to look at this now. A couple of years ago, the state auditor's office came out and they started auditing a number of these studies around the state. One of the things they came back with was that they interpreted the term average age as different than what we've been looking at over the years. One of the things that we always looked at was the total number. But they came back and actually wanted us to pull in and look at the actual age of each structure that...and I look at it just the primary structures, and give us an average. So, I do both. In this area, we had 61 permanent residential structures, and only eight of these structures were less than 40 years of age, so 86.9% of the structures were over 40 years of age. As you look at the table on page 20, if you've got the copy, we had 61 structures. We had a cumulative age of 4,357 years, or an average age of 71.43 years. So, either way, no matter how you look at this number, either through the way we've been doing it for 20, 30 years, or with the new approach that the auditor's office came out with, it meets the criteria of 40 years of age. Other issues that are involved are conditions of structures. I will tell you, I do not make the specific designation on those. I go to the assessor's website and I pull the data off of their site. So, anything on structural condition has been based upon what their site has those structures designated as. You've got streets out there that are both public and private that are in need of work, and got...there's pictures throughout the report on that. So, there's a number of things that are occurring in this area that really need some work and upgrading. And the area there...some of this area also kind of eludes back to the housing study, which I was involved with. This also gives some potential for some developers to look at some potential upgrades in that in the long run. So, it's not just about one specific type of project that could come forward, it's about the whole area and how you could upgrade it. Again, this is not about the urban renewal movement and blighted and substandard under those guidelines. I know somebody was concerned that if we...it was declared blighted, somebody could come in and take out their trailer and level the whole area. That's not the way this works. That's not the way this works. The history lesson that I, I can give you is that at one point in time, the city of Omaha had a blighted and substandard area that included Warren Buffett's home. So Mr. Buffett actually lived in a blighted area and he hasn't moved for a long time. So as we've discussed quickly with the planning commission, because the question was asked, this will not impact anybody's assessed valuations. Up or down? So that's, now, I'm here for questions if council has any questions.
Sir?
Yes?
In your report, you mentioned trash and junk cars, I think you turned them, termed them as, and some broken fences were included in some of the pictures.
Yes.
It would seem to me these are more code enforcement issues than anything else. We've got codes in, in our ordinances, I believe, to take care of these issues. So it would seem like if the code was being enforced that the ability to declare a property blighted and substandard based on these issues would go away.
That's true, but the stuff was there at the time that I did the study.
I understand.
So that's part of the findings.
I understand.
But that wouldn't make this study invalid by just removing this. This whole thing is based on all the data that was gathered in this area. Some of those areas are along streets that are in, long ways from being in great shape. They, potholes were, you know, all over these streets out there, there's a need for, and I'm just calling it as I drive out there and I see it. So this is more than just about those items. But they were present when I did the study and I did drive the area.
And I'm not trying to call into question your study.
Yeah.
You mentioned about the potholes and I think in one part of your report here, you talked about a washboardy area on Sixth Street. If I remember, was a couple hundred feet long or something.
It was fairly, yeah, it was fairly substantial. I mean, you know, I was, I just happened to be up there on a day that there was some snow and there was some melting and got a good handle on what the drainage situations were up there as well. So ideally, as we do things, the projects up here, some of that stuff becomes either through code enforcement or other means, becomes something that's taken care of over time. The question was asked at the county, the planning commission meeting. In my mind, these planning, these blighted districts are not intended to be there forever. Statute doesn't give us a great way to remove them, but the attorneys I deal with talk about just following the steps and going backwards in order to remove these from your community. So the idea is, let's see some impact on these areas if possible. And at some point down the road, they, they can go away. That would be my hope.
As far as the washboardy road, that would be more of a, a city issue with road maintenance, I presume.
It could be.
As far as the age of the homes or the, the structures, I don't think you necessarily call them homes.
The statute refers to structures.
Right. I live in Ward Four and I suspect that probably 90% of the structures in Ward Four are 40 years and older.
Yeah.
And when I look at that, may, maybe half of our town could be declared blighted and substandard.
That's, that's very.
And that is a concern.
That's very true.
And I understand the law and I understand why you did what you did. And I understand that very well. But I guess the only reason I bring that up is, I, I think it's fair that when we make these decisions on whether we declare this blighted and substandard, that we, we understand what we're doing as city council.
Yeah. I, I know what the statute says and I work with what the statute gives me and go forward. So statute at some point in time was set up to be 40 years of age or older.
I, I understand, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Marvin, how, how do we compare in relation to other communities of our size in our percentage? Blighted, are we still below a lot of communities or are we pretty similar in terms of percentage?
You're, you're real similar. I mean, I've done a lot of work with Grand Island. They're in the same boat you are with the 35% limit. I believe they're probably in the 20 to 25 range. They may be even lower, a little bit lower. But my professional opinion is, I don't like to see communities that are limited at 35% get much over 30. Because you never know what kind of opportunity you might see come in. So you don't want to cap yourself out.
Got a question real quick. So you talked about the backward steps of removing these in the future. So if you have a project that comes in, let's say they want to take advantage of the economic development incentives that would go along with this, next step after this, do you have to wait to remove that blighted and substandard until after that project has paid off the bonds?
I would.
Or, or does the statute just vague on that?
The statute's really vague on how you remove these, period. Legal counsel that I've worked with has said, if you've got a project that's taking advantage of TIF, then don't take it out until they're done.
What cities have gone the steps of removing spots?
Well, I live in David City and we've removed some for the very fact that some of the stuff we had declared as blighted and substandard, it never had developed or anything had happened with it in 15-plus years. And we had an area where a new development wanted to go in with a young entrepreneur that had to grow his business and was willing to open up some lots. So we backed off some of our areas so that that would fit in under the, and we got a 50% limit in David City. There's several that have, I, I don't know numbers. I think probably Grand Island has removed some in the past.
Thanks.
Mr. Marvin, I think you also said that this is kind of the precursor to establishing a tax increment finance project?
It can be, yes.
What other options would be available besides a tax increment finance project with this blighted and substandard designation?
Offhand, I don't know if there would be anything else, but there may be some areas within the federal government where there may be some economic development monies that are available as well. So.
Just as some comments that I'd like to make, I guess, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. Right now, North Platte, as far as the tax ranking is concerned, of the 25 most populous cities in Nebraska, North Platte's rated, rated number six of having the highest taxes in the state, number six. When I looked at the total city rate of taxes, this is based on the Nebraska Department of Revenue website, 2016 annual report, North Platte has a total city rate of .5030240. In comparison, and a lot of people like to compare North Platte with Carney, which I'm not sure that's a very fair comparison. But Carney has a .1431020 city tax rate. Carney has about, I mean, North Platte, excuse me, has a, a tax rate's about three times higher than Carney. Hastings, Fremont, Grand Island, Lincoln, Columbus, Norfolk, and Scottsbluff, all have substantially lower city tax rates than North Platte. When I look at my own personal property taxes where I live, my property taxes from 2008 to 2018 have increased 25%. Now, for people on a fixed income, the only way they can pay that tax, if they have a fixed income, may very well be to sell the property. And, and I, I don't know that we want to put our people in that position. I know that the property values have increased over time and that's one of the reasons why the real dollars have increased in property taxes. But there's people that are in circumstances, excuse me, where they're on a fixed income and their taxes continue to go up, but their income stays the same and they're caught in a bind because they get at a point where they can't pay the taxes without actually selling the property. And I think that's something that we need to take into consideration. Unfortunately, this is not just a city problem, I don't think. Lincoln County is number 17 of 93 counties in the state on our tax rate. For the last number of years, and I don't, I didn't keep a, a record of this, but we've been told by the planners that if we give city tax dollars to developers through tax increment financing, we're going to increase our population base, which then is going to reduce our net tax load per person. In reality, what's happened since 2010 to 2017, North Platte, Nebraska has lost 850 people. But my taxes have gone up in that same period of time 25%. Which means then that we have fewer people to spread the tax burden over, resulting in a net tax increase for everybody that lives here. When I look at our trade area, Lincoln County in particular, from 2010 to 2017, Lincoln County's lost 1,000 people. Those are people that are not going to be doing business in North Platte because they're gone. They're not going to be going out to the car dealer and buying a new pickup or they're not going to be going down to the shoe store and buying new shoes. The reality is we're losing population. And I think one of the reasons for that is, is our high taxes. And my concern is that every time we take one of these projects and we take money away from city government and the other government agencies, that money has to be made up somehow. And I know the arguments made that this money will eventually go back to the city. It's kind of a loan. And, and to a certain extent, that is correct. But at the same time, there's other taxing entities that lose money in this prospect. The school district loses money. ESU loses money, Mid Plains College uses, loses money. Twin, Twin Platte NRD loses money. The county ag society loses money. And the airport authority all lose money because that tax increment finance bond, those monies are not redistributed then to those taxing agencies or entities, rather. And somebody has to make up that money. And I think that's one of the reasons why we're seeing such a, such a disparity in our tax burden compared to other communities of our size. And so, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just being asked. This is a blighted and substandard area. That's correct. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Doug, this was approved by the planning commission, was it not?
Yes.
We said as a city council, do we, is this, do, do we do this all over again? Or are we just here to, I mean, do we, what standard do we have to override the planning commission?
You do have the authority. It's based upon your own decision. There's a resolution in front of you. The planning commission, I see, passed a resolution recommending to the city council, that the city council approve its resolution designating this area blighted and substandard. It's your decision.
Okay, so we, we, we can't accept their, their, their decision if we so choose?
Yes, you would. Your action will approving and adopting the blighted and substandard study that's before you.
Yeah, a couple of quick comments I just have in response to Councilman Riker's comments is that I think we've been viewed in the state as one of the most conservative users of TIF. So, and, and redevelopment financing, then Mr. Marvin and Mr. Pearson could probably comment if that's accurate. But my understanding is we've been one of the lower users in ranking of tax, tax increment financing. And to me, this is really about where do you want to have your designation? And what's good for economic redevelopment? I, I tend to think that 70 or 80% of our community could likely fit the criteria in a blight study. And so to me, it really boils down to having enough areas designated. I would tell you that if this, if my house was in this area, I would not be concerned about property values. I think it's more about where's the right place in your communities to have that, that give you the combination of, of desiring redevelopment but are also desirable for redevelopment and there's potential projects. And so as much as I, I'm also very concerned about our, our tax base and wanting to get that down. I also think part of the reason we're, we are where we are is because we've not done enough, enough to promote growth versus the other communities of our size. But I'm also very sensitive to the concerns about taxes. Because I do think those do contribute to loss of population.
I live right across the street from this area. The guy, the dividing line is Elder. East of Elder is where this is at. West of Elder, it's okay. My house is less than 40 years old. I stare at one of these every day. There's a picture of it right there. And I'd sure like to see that changed.
I live across the street from an area that was designated a year or two ago and now we have a housing project under construction that I think is positive.
Yes, you do. And we, we, we approve it right here.
I, I still think that the real decision is on the projects because you don't lose money if you make a good decision on the process, project-specific incentives. Under the law, TIF's only supposed to be granted if it wouldn't work without it. And so I still believe in the theory that if you make the right decisions and grant the right incentives or not grant the right incentives, then you in essence ultimately help your tax base. But, but that's a big discussion that we could argue about all night. I respect other positions on that too.
That's a discussion for another year.
It is, it is.
All we're doing today, though, is just declaring it blighted.
Has nothing to do with the TIF project.
Has nothing to do with TIF or anything like that.
Jim?
Just a comment, I guess, or two. You know, it seems like, I agree with, it's been said here, we could probably take out any tracks on the north side of town and discover that it's blighted. Much of our community is blighted by the standards that are set to evaluate that. But as I understand it, it requires someone who's interested in developing something that, that, that is the, is the genesis of the process to get it blighted so that they can get some tax dollars to do some development. Is that an accurate statement? I just feel kind of bad that government has to use tax dollars to do what a healthy economy could perhaps get done anyway. I wish that instead of a developer cashing in on these things, I wish that those individual property owners out there who could use some help upgrading a property, improving the property and thus improving the neighborhood, I wish we could get the money to get the water to where the fire is instead of spreading it among developers. And I live in a, I don't know if my area where I live would be qualified as blighted or not. Probably would. If they looked at my house and others, my, my home is 70 years old. It's well taken care of. And so if we could get the money to where the, the need is, instead of filtering it through so much of stuff like TIF, I think it would be healthier. That's just, that's just my comment. Thank you.
Could I just make a comment? I will belabor this, but this was determined or the planning commission, appointed by the mayor to represent appointed by the mayor to represent the city and, and, you know, make a good decision. In my opinion, there's good people on that planning commission. We even have an ex-member on the council. And I think they make high-quality decisions. And I, to me as a council member, I'm going to go along with what they have unless there's a compelling reason tells me not to. And that's just my thought on this. You know, unless there's a compelling reason, I think we need to let the people do their job so we can do our job.
Very good. Very good.
Now, there has not been a motion made on the floor as I, if I Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we are in still public hearing. Um, this gentleman over
Hello. My name's Mark Woods. I live at nine oh two North Emery. I own a house in the area you guys are talking about. And I'm all for development. I have no problem with it. But I don't agree with TIF, especially for housing. At the moment, there's a great big apartment building there in that area. I'm assuming since it's not blighted and substandard yet, that was built without TIF financing. Am I right, wrong?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't know what those are, so I don't know if they get paid back with the additional tax money or not. But that's my complaint. You know, I buy and rehab houses on my own. I'm just an average guy. I install flooring for a living. I've been doing it for twenty years. Nobody helps me. I get no break in taxes. I pay twelve thousand dollars in property taxes every year. It's twenty percent of my adjusted gross income. With all my other taxes, I pay about fifty percent. And I own these homes now. I don't have loans on them. I've worked hard and I've paid them off. These big companies, I mean, they have the resources. Why do I have to take my property tax dollars and help them make a higher profit margin? If they build a big project there, another apartment building, there's going to be more traffic. There's going to be more damage to the streets around there, but we aren't going to have any more property taxes. I live on an unsafe street. There's no money to fix it. Where are we going to get money to take care of these streets when they start to deteriorate? I just don't believe that these companies can't build without us giving them money. No, they can't make the higher profit margin they'd like to make. Hey, I'd like to make more money on every house I've sold. But I sell it at market value. And, you know, maybe they don't make as much, but why do I have to help by giving them my tax dollars? Thank you.
I would like to mention one thing yet tonight. Uh, this is not a TIF hearing. That is probably going to come at a later date. We're talking about a blighted area study. So if we can kind of keep it towards that, uh, this evening, um, you're all welcome to come in the future if there is a tech or a TIF financing uh, happen, if that happens in the near future. So if we just kind of keep it to, towards a blighted and studied. Now, it was, I saw a hand somewhere. Yes, sir.
Hi, Shane Harlan. I live at twenty-eight, twenty-one West Fourth. Uh, I agree with a lot of some things like he said, Mr. Riker said. Uh, if the codes were not upheld and it allowed these neighborhoods to get to this condition, why is the neighborhoods being held accountable for codes not being enforced? If the roads were not maintained, again, why is the neighborhood being held accountable and getting told they're blighted for codes and maintenance to roads not being maintained and done with our tax dollars? How come us as citizens get told about our things like that when we paid to have some of these things done? And now we're being told that it's our neighborhood's problem? How, can, can somebody answer? And again, as he said, if you're going to increase traffic and tear up more roads when there's no money to take care of the washboard roads left at issue anyways? What, what, how come some of that happens? Why are the neighborhoods and the citizens being left told their stuff?
I think is what was being said is there's just, that's a small portion of what we're discussing here. Yes, there are areas that need to be looked at, obviously. And that's just part, just one little piece of that study that was completed. Those issues certainly need to be addressed at some point.
Yes, and some of those, when it becomes down to the citizens and the neighborhoods being held told about their neighborhood when those should be done. Also, some of these houses, uh, that are in question, there's a brand-new house across the street from me that's being completed. There's one across the street from that that's less than five years old. That one whole area in there is less than fifteen years old. I know it was right around, oh, two thousand and six when you put that road in and started running power to that neighborhood. Right around those six. So many of them houses right in that area are twelve years old, maybe less. Brand-new houses being considered it's in a substandard neighborhood. Again, with many things not in the neighborhood or people's control. Twenty-five percent tax increase, so not in our control. I just, some of those things, I have little concerns about why we'd be told that our things are substandard on those issues.
Yeah. I just want to say something. You know, I think if, if the legislature would do their job, and I'm going to straight up call them out, if they would do their job and change this term to what it actually needs to be, which is a redevelopment zone, you know, I think the problem is that we have not been able to keep these areas up to this date. And I agree with Ty where he says that we have, you know, probably, it's, you can ask Judy, I'm sure it's got to be seventy-plus percent in North Platte would qualify as blighted and substandard under these terms that they've come up with. I think the, the, the processes, we're looking at this as through the negative. And what we need to realize is this is a chance for us to catch up some of these neighborhoods. That we can, there might be a developer that wants to come into there, and then we can actually catch up some of these roads. You know, if that happens to be part of the project that they would want to work on, or if they want to work on these neighborhoods. And by increasing that value, it just, it adds to the neighborhood versus taking away from it. It's a chance for us to be able to have a chance to improve the neighborhood where it needs to be improved. I completely agree. We need to work on these roads. And as we did earlier, we, we spent seven to seven and a half million dollars in roads and sewers and everything else. And it's so expensive. And this is a way that we can kind of take some of this, the, the, the risk on some of these roads and streets and stuff. And if they want to do, let's say in the future, a TIF project and improve a road or whatever, that it kind of goes on to that developer like we did with that Dixie project. It, it's a way to improve these areas and redevelop them and make them vibrant, you know, versus being empty lots or whatever else is that's being, being. So I just, I don't want to look at it as, I, I don't like looking at it as a negative here that these are terrible neighborhoods. They're not. They are neighborhoods that need some help. I think you said it, you know, we have road problems there. You know, we have some other code enforcement issues that we need to work on there. So now we've got some light on that, and let's start working on those. And this gives us a chance to be able to work on them. And it's not just picking one neighborhood. We're trying to pick certain neighborhoods that we think, you know what, you could have a chance to really exceed in these neighborhoods, and let's really just do that. And yours is one of the ones that we chose. And I'm sorry that somebody else in another part of town didn't get chose, you know, to be able to have their area redeveloped, you know, have a chance to be redeveloped and have some money invigorated into it. So that's the way I look at it, is, is more of a positive light.
How come with some of the tax dollars going on there, the roads were not able to be maintained until a developer wanted to come in there and do these roads? Why were they not maintained all along? That's roads that's not, so the citizens can do that, or a developer had to come in and decide we want to improve our roads?
No, but we only have so many dollars to go around, and it takes a lot of money to get all the roads done.
Absolutely. And with a lot of things going in reduction around this town, um, as you said, population has decreased. A lot of things point towards possible continuing reduction of our population, sadly.
To me, that's
The money's going to come around. The taxes are going up.
To me, that's the reason why we got to accelerate the process before that continues to spiral downwards. North Platte, as was mentioned, it's been a very conservative city in terms of using this redevelopment tool. Carney, in order to keep their property taxes down, they've continually redeveloped their community. Norfolk, in order to make their community really vibrant, they have redeveloped their community over and over and over. And so we've got to keep working on North Platte in order to be able to make it a viable product for people to want to move here. They have to want to move here. And
I agree with that.
And, and you know what? I'll be honest, we haven't done enough to be able to do that. We haven't done enough to make people want to move here. That this is the place they want to come to, we haven't done that. And that's where we've got to improve. And that's, I think, that this and other steps that we can take and work on, we can definitely get there.
Neighborhoods, that's how you get people to want to come here. Along the lines of some that I agree with. But isn't there other things we could do to start with to get people to want to come to this town?
I think we have done some things.
On a much larger scale than some of that?
I think we have done some things. We started trying to clean up some of the mobile homes. Uh, what was it, about five years ago, we passed the mobile home ordinance, just tried to start cleaning up some of the ones that have been junked or abandoned or whatever else. And now we have a demolition fund in order to help try to remove those. That way we can redevelop some of those lots. Um, you know, we're, we're doing things, you know, and it, it takes time, it takes effort. And sometimes it takes some creativity and some new ideas. And I'm kind of glad that we have some new council members, you know, Jim Backenstoss, Ty Lucas, um, Jim Nizley's not been here that long, uh, Lawrence hasn't been here that long, Ed's brand new. You know, we can get some more ideas flowing. It's one of the reasons I like when we have turnover on a council and in government. It's that way we can get new ideas flowing and work on it.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Can I ask what led to the, the boundaries of this study being determined or set? What, why were certain areas included in these boundaries?
Well, to start with, I look, try to look for clean boundaries. Uh, I like to stay on streets. Uh, and one of the things that we looked at too was we have to have the ability, as I mentioned earlier, to have enough resident or structures that meet the forty years of age and some other issues involved. So you start weighing that in by where that boundary starts to move. It becomes a kind of a shooting target at first. Then you hone in on some of this to make sure that you've got enough area. So, uh, it's easier, I will be honest, it becomes easier to write a legal description if it stays down the center line of roads.
I asked the very same questions you did earlier, and I now understand why you did it that way.
And, and there were areas, I looked at even further, but I started getting to more and more houses that were actually newer and newer. And we backed, I backed that off too. So it, it's kind of a moving target at first.
Don't you live at the corner of Pacific and Fort?
Yes. Yes, and you've helped me some projects in the past on some things that have been very helpful, and it's worked great.
Jim did a lot of that.
Shane, just one comment in response to one of your concerns. I think it's fair. Uh, Jim Bain, who's a longtime appraiser here locally, commented at the, um, planning commission meeting uh, that as an appraiser, he didn't feel that that designation had, um, I shouldn't put words in Jim's mouth, but I think he said that it should have no effect on any property value or negative connotation. And so, um, I, I think that's an important point that, um, and I know from my time on the planning commission that in conversations with, uh, Mr. Bain, as a longtime very respected appraiser in this town, he truly believes that, that it's not a negative, um, not a negative, um, attribute to a property that would decline its value or marketability in any side, which I think is important to, um, consider his opinion on it.
I did hear him say that the other night, and, and I had heard him say that before, and I agree. It doesn't affect it easily.
Shane, thank you for your comments and your questions. I wanted to see if there's, is there other, I thought I saw, yes, sir. Come on up.
My name's Howard Mendonca. I live at twenty-nine, twenty, West Fourth Street here in Nebraska.
Howard, I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
It's Mendonca. It's real easy to spell. M-E-N-D-O-N-C-A.
I, I'm sorry, what? Thank you.
Um, me and my family moved to North Platte in nineteen ninety-seven, and we love this town. In my opinion, um, the city administrators have failed this town miserably. And I'll tell you why I feel that. Um, going back to nineteen ninety, like Mr. Riker said, Grand Island has grown at the percentage rate of forty-five percent since we moved to North Platte. Carney has grown at the rate of forty-three percent since we moved to North Platte. North Platte's grown at the rate of point nine percent since I moved to North Platte. Um, we talked tonight, and I hear comments about it's not about the TIF. It is about the TIF. That's why planners want it blighted and substandard, so they can receive TIF money. Um, and I know we're not going to talk about TIF money, because the mayor politely asked not to, so I won't. But, um, we've talked about growing our community. Houses and apartment buildings don't grow any community. What it does is it takes residents out of one house and moves them to another house. There's nothing here in North Platte to make people move to North Platte. We're losing jobs at a ridiculous rate. The railroad is laid off a hundred plus, and if you don't think they're going to lay off, they're going to lay off again, I promise you. We, we have another cut coming. I work for Union Pacific. I know Andrew works for Union Pacific. We've lost companies like, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, we've lost companies like Herburgers. You know, uh, I know we replaced them with Ashley Furniture in Staples. Um, it, it's very sad to see that the planning commission and the city council think that building thirty-seven houses on Dixie and Philip and redeveloping a, i- in my opinion, I think it's going to be more apartment buildings behind there, the same deal, but, um, and yeah, we need affordable housing for people, there's no doubt. But like Mr. Riker said, and, and I believe somebody else said, we have people leaving our city left and right. And it's not houses and apartment buildings that keep people here, it's jobs. Um, Walmart Distribution Center, in my opinion, was the last big industry that's come to our town. And that was decades ago. I believe two decades ago, almost. Decade and a half ago. So I would just like to see our city and our planning commission, um, go out and um, strive to get big businesses, industries to come to our town to fill these apartment buildings and houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I don't know where he went. I think, thank you. No, that's okay. I don't, I don't have a question for you. Thank you. I have a comment about your comment. He's, in my opinion, he's exactly right. Well, the mayor says, well, this isn't about TIF. That's exactly what this is about. This is about TIF, because this is a step in the direction of another TIF project, which I'm fundamentally opposed to it, anyway. But, uh, thanks for pointing that out.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Craig Reed with Perry Reed Properties, probably one of the people in question Mr. Marvin's talking about. We do have Pacific Place Apartments, just to confirm, it was developed with low-income housing tax credits and home fund dollars. It was a grant back then. So that was a low-income housing project. We did, uh, we are in support of the blight study to try and get some market-rate housing to the town of North Platte. I will say we are developing right now in Hastings, Norfolk, all the communities you've mentioned, even York at this point. With the help of TIF, which we are going there, and we use some LV five eighteen funds in a couple of those communities. Um, and that's how these communities are growing. So anyone, I don't know how you fix your tax base, but I can tell you without new housing, the problems that the blight study shows, they don't go away. We are building in Hastings the same property we'd like to build here. I've got my general contractor with me. But literally eighty-four units is ten million dollars is what it's going to cost us to build. And when it's done, it's going to be worth eight point two million, if we get the rents we think we can get. So there is a one point eight million dollar gap there. And so we've got real hard money that goes in these things, and we've got a gap to make up. I can go to Omaha and build the same property probably for less and not need any assistance, and we'd do it all day long. I mean, so there, there does have to be a private-public partnership in North Platte to try and get any new construction going. I don't, even if it's bringing new business or new housing, there's, you, you guys are probably sitting in a position that is not enviable to try and draw new housing and new businesses. So we do support it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You're in a public session or a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Sure. Um, and public hearings closed?
I now make a motion that we would adopt a resolution to approve the Blight and Substandard Study by the City of North Platte and approve, an approval of related actions regarding to Blight and Substandard Study Pacific Street Apartments prepared by Marvin Planning Consultants.
Second. That motion passes six to two. Okay, thank you everyone for speaking up. Appreciate that. Item number five. Okay, item number five is public hearing and action on recommendation by the City of North Platte Planning Commission on an application by North Platte Recreational LLC owner and Verizon Wireless Communications L C for a conditional use permit to allow a ninety-eight foot telecommunication tower and radio equipment site to be located at four twenty East Walker Road. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Jeffrey Skinner, authorized agent for Verizon Wireless. I reside at seven oh five Southeast Cardinal Lane in the beautiful Waki, Iowa. Uh, traveled out here this evening to see you folks. I'll start with by saying Verizon has obviously brought forth an application to improve their service south of I eighty in the town of North Platte. If any of you folks drive through that area, obviously you know that the
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I believe we have to leave those doors open. If you could just ask those folks to move down the hallway, it would probably help out a little bit.
He's, he's comments.
He's getting fired.
Right.
Can't have a closed door meeting.
Okay, I apologize.
It's okay, absolutely.
Please go ahead.
Uh, obviously if you drive and, and live through that area, you know that the service, uh, south of I eighty um, is, is poor at best. You can make a phone call. Um, but for other services such as data services, like checking email, videos, anything of that nature, it, it can't support it. Uh, so it's a capacity issue. The purpose of this application and its current location that we brought forward is to alleviate that problem. Uh, the zoning district is favorable for this type of development. We've kept the height, um, low enough, uh, so that it's visually still attractive, but high enough to meet their objectives. Uh, that part of town with all the growing businesses in particular, such as Menards, uh, and the Community College that's growing down there, uh, particularly with those number of users, it's, it's creating the issues. Again, this will solve the capacity issues that Verizon has. You'll, if you look at the plans that have been submitted, you'll see not only does the tower support their equipment, but two additional carriers as provided by your ordinance. The tower is setback, uh, currently as shown to meet your setbacks at a minimum. Uh, the Planning Commission also did ask of Verizon, due to the location of a three-phase electrical line uh, to the west, if Verizon would be willing to design the tower so that the collapse radius of the site would remain within their lease area as shown on your drawings, which is within thirty feet of the proposed tower. Just for your objective. So, uh, from there, you'll see a fenced area, uh, that is chain link fence. It's rocked on the inside, houses all of the equipment as shown on the CDs, uh, for Verizon's equipment and additional providers as they may come along. Uh, there is a stoop light inside the leased area for security measures. And at this height, there is no light on the top of the tower site. So at night, there are no beacons in the area to disturb anybody. Um, the general uses around the area, again, it's zoned M one. Uh, you've got a field, a vacant field to the south, a, a entertainment vendor, uh, to the north, a car lot and mid-American diesel on the same property itself. So again, there's no residents in the area. Uh, so we felt the location was very suitable for a tower development. From there, I'm happy to answer questions.
I have a question, if I may, and maybe Judy could help me. Being at the airport, when somebody comes with a tower of a hundred feet, ninety-eight feet, uh, do we get involved with the FAA at all as far as approach zones to the runways?
Um, yeah, we always look at, at, um, the airport zoning that we have that shows the flight paths for the runways. And then we do send out, um, receipts to the airport manager. So he would have gotten a receipt that said that where the location was. And if he had any objections to that, then he would be able to respond. And we did not receive any objection from him.
Okay. That's just for my information.
We have been involved in issues with cell towers before. And so I'd like to ask you a couple of questions just to, to shore things up. Will your use, I think you did indicate that your use would, uh, conform to all applicable ordinances, laws and regulations of any governmental, uh, jurisdiction.
Correct.
Uh, will your use have adequate water, sewer and drainage facilities for your use?
For this use, correct.
And will there be ingress and egress designated, uh, so as to minimize, uh, traffic congestion in the area?
They're utilizing the current ingress and egress into the property itself as it exists. It was more than sufficient. Uh, and they have easements for their one maintenance vehicle that would be on site approximately once a month to service the equipment as needed.
Excellent. And will your use, uh, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district?
Correct, yes.
You're seeking a conditional use here, but, uh, your use will comply with all other regulations of the district. Uh, will your use be in harmony with the character of the area? And as far as this particular piece of property, is it, uh, the most appropriate use of the property at this time?
Yes, if, if, uh, reviewing your ordinance, the M one district is one of the most favorable districts for the development of a tower site.
I thank you very much.
I won, I'm sorry.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to close public hearing?
I'll second.
A public hearing closed?
It's important that if you make a motion, uh, in connection with this application, that you refer to your materials. You have two options. You have before you a motion to approve the application. And you have a motion to make in the event you wish to deny the application. Uh, it's important to you make the appropriate motion and you have, um, uh, some options there if you approve a motion, if you wish to make a motion to approve the application. Uh, those should all be stated, uh, in the motion.
I move that we find the request for a conditional use permit to construct a ninety-eight foot monopole telecommunications tower and site located at four twenty East Walker Road meets the minimum standard stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, section one fifty-six, three twenty-two, and approved and grant the conditional use permit requested with the conditions that all elements of the application are complied. Uh, and with the condition that Verizon mu- uh, be required to submit a fall zone letter designated to keep the fall zone at thirty foot. The use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. The use shall have adequate water, sewer and drainage facilities. Ingress and egress shall be designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the, uh, public streets. The use shall, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. The use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
And I'll still second.
And that motion passes. Okay, um, let's track here. Uh, item number six, public, public hearing and action on recommendation by the City of North Platte Planning Commission on application by Gordon and Susan, Susan Crutson for a conditional use permit to allow an RV campground, community center and log sawmill and shop in A one transitional agricultural district located at forty-twelve Rodeo Road.
Gordon.
My name is Gordon Crutson. I live at seventeen nineteen East D here in North Platte. And I guess, does anybody have any questions on our posed use?
I do.
Oh, well Doug does.
Well, Doug. What can I help with?
Will your intended use conform to all applicable ordinances, laws and regulations of all government jurisdictions?
Yes.
Will your use have adequate water, sewer and drainage facilities?
Uh, we have enough there to sustain the small building that is there. It's a septic system. We're not, we're not planning to connect to the city at this point. If the mobile home, you know, the trailers decide, if we get enough people that are there that feel they need everyday sewer, uh, there is a sewer district across the road that I would definitely look at at connecting at a later date. Uh, but the expense of that is pretty phenomenal at this point.
For your intended uses, you do have adequate water, sewer and drainage?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have, uh, ingress and egress designated that will minimize traffic congestion in the area?
Uh, I have.
Can you get in and out of your property without creating a problem?
Yes, there is a egress that's been there for many years.
Okay, and you'll be using that?
And I'll be using the one that was there.
And as far as you know, uh, will your use, in all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of this zoning district?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Does it? Yes, yes, it does.
Will your use be in harmony with the character of the area?
Yes.
Um, what kind of an area is it? Is it a residential area of?
Well, it's got
It's a combination of a lot of different things. You've got some residential to the north, you've got some ag property to, I believe, the west and the south. And then you've got some commercial property to the east. So it's a combination. So yes, Planning Commission found that it was in harmony with the area.
And your use will be?
His use is also a combination of a lot of interesting things. Like commercial, recreational, yes.
Fits within the character of the, of the area. Okay, I, thank you for answering my question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I'll just make a statement. You sure cleaned that place up. It looks really nice.
Well, we're still growing, so we hope we get her there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else wish to speak? This is a public hearing.
Move to close public hearing. I now move that we find the request for a conditional use permit for a conditional use, for a conditional use permit to allow an RV campground, community center and log sawmill and shop located at four thousand and twelve Rodeo Road meet the minimum standards stated in the North Platte Code of Ordinances, section one fifty-six, three twenty-two, and approve and grant the conditional use permit requested with the conditions that all elements of the application are complied with. One, the use shall conform to all applicable ordinances, laws, regulations of any governmental jurisdiction. Two, the use shall be, have adequate water, sewer and drainage facilities. Three, ingress and egress shall be so designated as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Four, the use shall, in, uh, all other respects, conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. Five, the use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and the most appropriate use of the land.
Second.
And that motion passes. Uh, item number seven, public hearing and action to adopt ordinance number four zero zero four to rezone certain lands from an R three dwelling district to a R four dwelling district and in separate action to amend the master plan for the mobile home to speak?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Okay, public hearings closed? Yes, please.
An ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lake County, Nebraska, rezoning lands described as lots one and three, Buffalo Bill Mobile Home Park East, an administrative subdivision, North Platte, Lake County, Nebraska, from R three dwelling district to R four dwelling district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, providing for the effective date of publication thereof.
Move that we would adopt ordinance number four thousand and four on first reading to rezone certain lands from an R three dwelling district to an R four dwelling district and in separate action to amend the master plan for mobile home park to allow RVs to be parked and occupied as part of the mobile home park.
Second. And that motion passes. Item number eight, public hearing regarding updates on community development block grant program. CDBG is used to assist City of North Platte in community development and revitalization programs.
Um, basically in the review comments, this is just a mandatory public hearing that has to be held when you're in the process of doing community development block grants. Those, so there were several of them listed on that public hearing. Um, so we just have to provide an update as to what's been going on with those different programs. Um, I wish a few of the individuals that were here earlier would have stayed because there are programs out there and there's one spec- a couple specifically that the City of North Platte is in, and that's the owner occupied rehab housing projects, um, twenty sixteen and then the new twenty eighteen. The twenty sixteen program, we helped, um, twelve or in the process of helping twelve, um, lower income individuals to go in and do some roofing, some window repair, um, heating and air conditioning type things uh, with that grant money. The two thousand and eighteen, we're planning on doing some more, um, owner occupied rehab units also. We are approved for ten units. Um, those again are lower income, people that need repairs, help repairs with, um, roofing, um, windows again, some, some interior things when it comes to insulation and, uh, air conditioning and heating. So those are a few things that are, that are good for some of the areas and some of the, um, owner occupied houses that are in North Platte that are in need of repair. Um, so those are a couple of, of the grant programs that we're doing. And again, it's just a update. So if you guys have any questions or if any of the public has any questions on those grants, I'm here to help answer, yes.
So how are those, um, grants, like year over year, um, in terms of like they're, they're increasing, decreasing, where, uh, you know, our reliance on them and that kind of thing? Like where, how are the funds coming in in terms of like their total amounts for North Platte?
Well, it all, it, it's competitive. So it all comes from HUD. So it's federal grant money. The HUD Housing and Urban Development grant money to individual states. And then those states then have that money available that they can grant to, um, individual cities. And it's a, it's a application process. It's competitive. So we're not just guaranteed those funds. We have to put together an application that says things like, and that's when a Blight and Substandard study can come into play because you can qualify for block grant funds based off of, um, income of an area, based off of whether it's already blighted and substandard. So it's a redevelopment type area, um, or emergency need. And that's how you qualify for that. The amount of dollars depends on how much money the federal government has given the state that they can allocate towards these different programs. Um, you'll see in what you have, there was a planning one that was done. So there's a certain amount of funds that you can apply for, for planning. We had a max of thirty thousand for that one. Um, for these owner occupied rehab, it's about twenty-five thousand per house that we're allowed to qualify for, so.
Um, just one last question. So all the different programs altogether, I know there's certain caps on them over one year and I think, was it three years or five years? Or is it just all one year based?
Um, most, most of the CDBG grants that you get, it's for a period of about eighteen months to two years.
Okay, so we're doing pretty well. Okay, so we're doing pretty well on our caps overall, then?
I think so.
Okay.
Jim? If I understand this right, excuse me, being a blighted and substandard area is not a prerequisite to accessing these funds, or is it?
It could be. It depends on what you're applying for. If, there's certain criteria for qualifying for block grant funding. You have to qualify an area, space, or a house based on low income, or you have to qualify based on emergency need. Emergency need is extremely hard to qualify for. That would be if there was some sort of a disaster that happened, a flood or something like that, then you can qualify by emergency need. Or the other way of qualifying is a designated blight and substandard area. So, yes, I mean, is there a possibility of qualifying an area that is not blighted and substandard? Definitely. If the individuals in that area are low income, then yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Judy, I, I'm looking here at the first two paragraphs about the downtown. Can you give us an update on where that is and how that's progressing?
Yeah, we had, the downtown grant fund that we had, that was to help with demolition. And so, of course, you saw that that has happened. That was also to help with some infrastructure improvements when it comes to accessibility. I know the engineering department was working a little bit on, you know, some of the road improvements, some of those types of things. We just have to get some additional funds because $350,000 is what we were approved for. That doesn't even do a block. So, that's, that's pretty tough. Then, there was $100,000 that was approved for our facade improvement program. Now, we do have a lot of that money allocated. Now, that is a matching reimbursement-type fund with the downtown individuals. So, if somebody spends $40,000 on improving their, their facade, they can apply for funds to get half of that reimbursed after they had paid it out. So, we have approved some of those funds for individuals. They just haven't gotten their projects started. But if you go downtown, you'll notice two or three individuals that have done an incredible job and really have started doing that. So, if we can just get the others, you know, to, to go. But yeah, most of that funding has been allocated. It just hasn't started yet. And it could just be the timing. We'll probably see some more going in the spring.
So, are any of those funds available to redo the streets and, and the sidewalks and the curbing? Is that, is that where we're headed in the future?
Yeah, there's about, right now, in that particular fund, there's about $180,000 that's allotted to do some street improvements down there. But like I said, street improvements are so, so expensive that we're going to have to come up with some other funding to do that. The Historic Preservation Commission has applied for some funds through the National Park Service, so we're hoping to get that to help match some of those funds to help do that downtown. Yes.
Is there any way that we can use any of our other funds that are available for business development to improve the streets down there?
I guess I'm not sure what fund you might be thinking of, Ed, but it would be very difficult to use any, I guess, funds that I'm thinking of right at the moment for that. What our thought was originally is, is that we would do it much as we've done tonight earlier, and that is, we'd have to go down in there and rebuild those streets and then turn around and bond them. I would also remind you that, that was one of the priority projects that we had picked out for the absence sales tax, too, if we would be successful at some point in the future of getting that, too.
Is there any possibility, like, the Quality Growth Funds could be allocated for that? I mean, we're looking at, at improving downtown. Maybe that's a stretch, but providing opportunities for businesses to relocate downtown?
We did get some, sorry.
Well, there was already some participation in the Quality Growth Fund for the programs that Judy was talking about. But to earmark that specifically for the downtown street improvements, I think it would be a stretch.
Jim, is it right that the Quality Growth Fund, though, could play individual buildings, correct?
Yes, that's, that's very correct. In fact, that really would be kind of the target for it.
And, and they have helped. We have gotten some matching funds from them to also combine with our CDBG funds to do some of those improvements that you see down there already with that facade improvement. So, yes, they have been an active participant in that portion of it, the facade improvement portion.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Public hearings closed? Oh, there's no action on that. All right. We have, number nine has been pulled off, so we'll move to item number 10.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would it be not, time now to discuss this whole situation?
What's, what situation?
You know, so much is on here. Do we have to get it on the agenda to discuss what needs to be done with this property?
It's been taken off the agenda.
I would suggest that-
People have left that might be interested, so it's not the appropriate time.
So, we would have to get it on the agenda to discuss this whole scenario? Okay.
Now, we'll move to item number 10. Approve renewal of administrative and operational agreement for hazardous materials response services between the state of Nebraska acting by and through the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency and the North Platte Fire Department.
Move that we approve the renewal of administrative and operational, operational agreement for hazardous materials response services between the state of Nebraska acting by and through the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency and the North Platte Fire Department.
Second. That motion passes. Item number 11, accept lease proposal and authorize mayor to sign the acceptance document and lease purchase documents with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, Inc., for a rotor chopper wood debris system for use by the Public Service Department in the amount of $398,350.
Move that we accept lease proposal and authorize the mayor to sign the acceptance document and lease purchase documents with U.S. Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, Incorporated for rotor chopper wood debris system for use by the Public Service Department in the total amount of $398,350.
Second.
Is this the only one that the city owns? Okay, so we only have one, though, right?
It would replace the one that burned up out there here a year or so ago.
Okay, thanks. Do we have a need for two, then? Okay.
Just a quick clarifying question. Is, so the least amount is the 288, 350? Is that correct? That it's net of the 110, we're not refunding that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Sitting there reading, my bad.
Another Jim. That motion passes. And item number 12, claims.
Move that we pay the claims?
Second.
Is there, can we have some just general discussion about variety of topics of interest to us?
No.
Can't do that. When, when can we do that, Doug?
What?
In a workstation, then, right?
If you put it on the agenda and schedule a meeting, yes.
A general discussion about the state of, of-
No, you have to have specific items.
Specific thing. Okay, thank you.
So that people in the public see that, and they know what you're going to talk about, and they can come if they're interested.
Right, got you. Thanks.
And claims have passed.
We adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Aye, aye, aye. Thank you, everyone.